Row call, please.
Alderman Evans.
Present.
Kurt.
Here.
Barnes.
Here.
Swanson.
Here.
Parker.
Here.
Houlis.
Here.
Healy.
Here.
And Mayor Harris.
Present. Would everybody please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance and remain standing for a moment of silence?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Agenda item five.
Fiscal year 2026 budget discussion.
Well, thank you, Your Honor. We had scheduled this budget discussion just to answer any unaddressed questions the council might have. There was some interest in looking at sponsorships and contributions a little bit more and generally discussing the Gaming Fund, in particular, when we originally presented decided and we had to transfer to the General Fund for fleet amortization, but in the final budget that will be removed, so I think that question may have been addressed. But be happy to answer any of the questions that the council might have on sponsorships and contributions. Most of these are paid for from the General Fund. The Visitors Bureau is paid from the hotel motel tax. We've got agreements that cover most of these items that you see on that list, with the exception of some of them that are just memberships or if it's a, you know, city-sponsored event like the parade or Red, White &amp; Blue Boom. But we'd be happy to answer any unanswered questions about this or anything that has to do with the budget.
I do have something to bring up. I know it was mentioned where the city has funds set aside for certain, I guess we'll say, development outside of the council, $3,000 allotment. Is that still in the budget in a separate line item?
I'll ask Jessica to address it specifically, but that was one of the questions we had posed at the last presentation was whether the council wanted to continue that practice or not into the future and what are the amount to is, as you know, each council member has a set amount of funding for travel and conferences and things like that. The past couple of years, we've also included separate funding for council members to go to the IML because, you know, we think that's so important. Jessica, you want to talk a little bit about that more?
That is the case that's in the proposed 2026 budget right now. We have three members, or I guess three city council members can go to IML. We have that conference fee paid for out of the city administration budget right now, subject to council approval. It doesn't have to stay.
I know. I'll give you my input on this, and this was, I know we had a discussion on this, and, you know, for a long time, we had a, the council has $3,000, and we're okay with it being in one fund and use it for representation or development. So I figured, I think that, you know, if the cost of those things are going up a little bit, maybe, you know, I still think, though, that councils should pick and choose what they're going to go to. I think that's, we originally, a few years back, we had a $4,000, and I know we made a concerted effort, the council did at the time, to lower that number to 3,000 after we had some spending issues and we felt it was fiscally responsible to lower that. And I feel that 3,000 is ample enough funds to attend the IML, and I think that should be, in my own opinion, I think it should remain at that and not have an extra line item in the city budget for it.
And I agree with that. I think that there had been some abuses of council spending in the past. I think I was one that referred to it as a slush fund when I was first elected, and it had been changed to $2,000 for conference fees and conferences and 1,000 for discretionary funds. I personally don't feel that the taxpayers need to pay for my discretionary funds, so I've never used it. But I think as far as conferences, the $2,000 allocation, I felt, was adequate to go to the IML conference. If you, you know, wish to eat out at expensive places or go out on, you know, the city's dime and the taxpayers' dime, I don't agree with that. So I guess my feeling is I would like it to stay at $3,000. Personally, I would like to keep the 2,000 for conferences, so you get to go to one conference a year. If you go over that $2,000 amount, perhaps dip into your $1,000, but I think that the aldermen need to be responsible and transparent to the taxpayers about how we are spending your money, and I don't think anybody in the city of Rock Island needs to buy me a dinner anywhere.
I would like to, I guess, clarify my stance on that. Why, I'm okay with the 3,000 just being one. I think it'd be probably cleaner for accounting, and since we're allowed to transfer it over, I just think it'd be, in my opinion, I would just rather have the 3,000 instead of the two and the one, and the same amount of funding. It's just, I think it would be cleaner for finance to sort through that.
I'll share a dissenting opinion. If we limit being able to go to conferences up to $2,000, I won't be able to be able to attend both the IML conference, which I think we all recognize is worthwhile, and the International Downtown Association's annual conference, which I've attended in the past and has been helpful for me in seeing what other communities do regarding their downtown. If there are concerns about, like, specific spending on meals or whatever, I'm happy to entertain a conversation about limits. That's no problem. But just for the record, I mean, if we limit conference attending to 2,000, I won't be able to go to both of those. So, I mean, I think that that's valuable, but if other people don't, that's fine.
So are you saying that you're okay with the 3,000 in the one fund? You can do two conferences for 3,000 if that's what you choose to use your money on, correct?
Sure. I'd be fine with that.
Okay. Just clarifying.
I think I would add that, I didn't know this was going to be a question, otherwise I was prepared. There's some research on it. I think in the budget, there's 3,000 in travel and then 1,000 representation. So my thought is those could be combined together so there is sufficient, because some, you know, some council members, especially those of us that are new, we do appreciate being able to go to conferences. I know I gained a lot from the IML conference, and then just today, I just happen to be looking at the National League Conference, and they have a subcommittee specifically for local elected officials, so it's a possibility that maybe I want to go to both of those conferences. And is it a possibility we could just have one pot for all alderpersons for travel, so, you know, some that do not go, those funds could be used by other, you know, ones that do, you know, want to go to conferences?
Just to clarify, you said 3,000 for one and 1,000, it's actually a total of 3,000, not three plus one equalling four. So it's, there's 2,000 and one for professional development, and then there's 1,000 in just representation. I'm okay with putting the, combining the 3,000 per alderperson, but it's not four, it's three is what there is currently.
Is that correct, Jessica?
I'm checking on that right now.
Okay.
Yeah, I think you're right. It's 3,000, and the policy says it's split, half for professional development and half for representation. I think that was part of the problem before with IML was that you couldn't do both. Was it 3,000?
Actually, two and one.
I'm looking at the policy that was adopted in '22.
We may have changed that.
Yeah.
Again, it would be easier just to put it in one pot than the 3,000.
Yeah, I think if it was in one pot, that would be more workable.
I want to just interject. You know, I was also one of the ones that went to IML as well as to Minneapolis, and depending on when you actually get into those trips, sometimes the expenditures do get high, because we actually ran into an issue with the flight to and from, which almost ate up the whole expenditure. And as Alderman Barnes stated, National League of Cities is also a very good conference to help educate newly councilmen to a lot of the things that are going on, as well as creating relationships with what other cities are doing, to come back and adequately be able to assist in the growth of our wards as well as this city. And so to hold new councilmen or councilmen away from being able to get those relationships as well as that knowledge, I think I find that kind of hard right now. And not saying that we're trying to use money based on the taxpayers, but I also believe that the councilmen need to be adequately informed and prepared to be able to represent their constituents as well as this city.
What we have in the proposed budget right now is $1,500 for representation and $1,500 for professional development.
I'm for 3,000 and combining the two.
So we have sort of two conversations happening right now. We're having a policy conversation and we're having a budget conversation. Do we have consensus on eliminating the line item for specifically IML attendees and allocating $3,000 each alderperson for either professional development or representation, and then at a later city council meeting, we can update the policy to clarify what that $3,000 amount can be spent? Do we have consensus on that?
I think we're pretty clear-cut, and over through the past times that we've had this discussion on what can be, what can be used, although I would say maybe revisit like a per diem amount for meals and things like that. But I do think, though, that I just think it'd be cleaner for finance as well as, you know, everybody, if we just had the 3,000, then you could, you pick and choose whether you use it for representation or you feel like you want to attend a conference or something.
I'm curious to know, on average, what other municipalities spend on personal development and travel. You know, we, obviously, we don't want to overdo it on the taxpayers' dollar. However, we don't want to, you know, sacrifice any learning, you know, just like Alderman Evans said, you know, a lot of us are new, and this is a hell of a learning curve, you know, to serve the people the best way we possibly can, and we look forward to being trained. We look forward to building relationships outside of the city, which is very important for the development of the city as well. So, you know, I'm just curious what other, on average, what other municipalities do, how much their alderpersons and mayor are allowed to travel, what is normal? Because it just seems like for, I'm speaking for myself, for a new mayor to only go to one conference a year, that is, that's a disservice to the community, I think. You know, year three or four, yeah, maybe not, but my first year, I need to be out there. I need to be meeting people. I need to be the best that I can for the city of Rock Island, and that is my take on it. So if anyone does have any information about what normal looks like, I would love to hear it.
Well, I don't, again, I don't know the specifics, but you're not included in the alderman expense thing. Yours is a separate, yours is probably separate than the alderperson's amount. So you citing that, I understand, but you're not held to the same, you're not held to the same, I guess, rules or regulations that we are?
Sure. But, you know, while we are in conversation, you know, we are one team up here, and we are only as strong as our weakest link. And it wouldn't behoove us very well for me to go to conferences by myself, you know, for, I'm not saying security, but it's always, it's always accommodating to travel with someone, with a colleague. It just makes for a smoother trip. So, you know, what's good for the goose is good for the gander, so we're just having conversation with everybody.
Go ahead.
I would agree. Like I said earlier, as a representative of the First Ward and the city of Rock Island, I want as much information as I can to be able to adequately represent the First Ward and the city. And in those particular conferences is where I gained that knowledge, and it's not always just right here. It's about being able to network with those other groups to find out what is working in their cities, to make sure that I bring back those ideas back to our city. And so even though I'm hearing that this is about councilmen, I'm a strong councilman who want to work very hard for the people in which I represent, and the only way to do that is to take this time, being here six months, to get as much information as I can from other people who've sat in these seats, to be able to come back and represent them to the strongest for the next three years.
And I feel that, so, most of us have been to and go to the Illinois Municipal League. We are an Illinois municipal body. It's where you need to go to find out about Illinois law and Illinois municipal bodies. The majority of places in Illinois that you want to work with like municipal members who are in the state of Illinois, with state governance, state laws that you have, are pretty much within a day's trip, and you really don't need to fly anywhere to go see them. There are numerous cities in our location that have mayors. All of them have multiple aldermen, so there are multiple opportunities for us to network with other mayors, to network with other aldermen, to network with other agencies in the state of Illinois. And I feel very strongly that the city of Rock Island, as you could tell from our budget, we are struggling a little bit, and I think it is completely inappropriate for any elected official to waste taxpayer money on an airplane to a conference that you could easily take care of in your home state. If we were a city that was flush with revenue, okay, that's fine, but I think at some point as an elected official, that you need to be a little bit conscious of how you are spending the citizens' money.
So I guess my question is, going back to last year, so you had additional funds for staff, correct, for the IML conference last year?
Correct, yeah.
And so you were recommending that same additional amount?
That's what's in the proposed budget. I think it's $4,500, which would account for three people probably to go to IML.
So based on your thoughts, it's a good idea for councilmembers to attend?
Yeah, I mean, one of the challenges is if you have a limited amount of money, I mean, it's in the city's best interest for councilmembers to go to IML, so you didn't want to make it a choice between IML or something else. I've worked for five cities, and everybody does it differently, but in my experience in those cities, everybody didn't have their own little pot of money. You would just budget so much money for council to go to IML, so much for travel and things like that, and, you know, some people would go, some people wouldn't, and you just based it on history of what you had spent.
My question, I guess my response to that, Todd, would be, so you said there was $4,500, so what, first come, first served, and the rest are left out? I mean, what if somebody else wanted to go to, I mean, that doesn't hardly seem fair if you're going to pay for three IMLs and not a lot, if you're going to do that, then you should lot that same amount of money times seven, because, and I'm not proposing that, I'm just saying that just seems very, well, let's say some other alderperson decides, well, I'm going to do these two or three other ones, so you're going to allocate those funds to some, so what, draw straws? I mean, I don't know what's, I mean, who picks, I mean, the first come, first served conferences are different times of year. I find that really kind of an unfair practice to the other alderpersons if that's, if we're putting that out there, and it's like, okay, whoever grabs the money out of the pot first gets to go.
Yeah, no, it's not set up like that. I mean, the budget is just like, we'll document, there's contingency funds. If everybody wants to go, you know, everybody gets to go, but that's not the history in Rock Island. I don't think we've ever had everybody go, ever, so.
I think, I think we're, I think we're committing a lot of time to .00005% of the city's budget. I think that we may have consensus, you know, we're not going to do 4,500 for the council to attend IML, and everybody else gets 3,000. We remove the separate line item for IML attendance. We raise the 1,500 to 3,000. You just, you as an alderperson get to decide if you want to spend that on representation or conference. That seems like a fair compromise to those who want less money for conference, those that want more money for conferences. I mean, can we reach a compromise on this and move on?
We could move on. It's not so much, it's, yes, it's the dollar amount, but it's also about the principle of what's happening here, is what I'm stressing as well.
Sure, and I think we can have a conversation about policy separately.
I'm fine with that. I guess I would just like to say that I'm one, I'm a little different. I've never spent $1 in five years. I can't go to IML. I work. I never will spend a dollar, so I don't want the taxpayers to pay for a meal to me to do anything. So I guess I would just want to make sure that no one spends my $3,000, because I don't, you know, I make it a privilege that I don't do that, because I don't want to take the taxpayers' money. So I just want to make sure that that wouldn't be spent. So I would rather it be individual, then I'm done. Can we talk about Dari and how I don't want to give him $300,000, please, at some point? So that's where I'll switch gears to get out of this.
Yeah, we'll talk about that more in the near future. You know, we've been working on an economic development strategic plan, and it includes information regarding reassessing how we are organized to do economic development, so that'll be a larger discussion after the first of the year.
Thank you.
Todd, so, did you just say that we are no longer funding fleet amortization with this budget?
No, it's just, it's fully funded. It's just, we didn't need to do the transfer.
It'll be funded by the General Fund instead of the Gaming Fund?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
So I guess that kind of goes to some of the questions that I had regarding sponsorship contribution and gaming. So I've already submitted my questions to the staff, got a response, so this is more for the public's benefit, so I'll go through those questions and try to allot maybe, no more than 20 minutes total. So regarding sponsorships and contributions, I do know that the funding source is the General Fund at this time, but if we look back at history, like 10 years ago, the funding source was gaming, but because gaming has taken on debt, now, General Fund has to be used to support the contributions and sponsorships. So my other question was for someone to provide a brief explanation describing how each entity or program qualifies to receive funds. Are there formal contracts in place for these sponsorships and contributions? Are the sponsorships and contributions automatically renewed each year? So I'll stop at those three questions for now.
Miles, you want to talk a little bit about sponsorships and contributions and the way it works?
Sure thing. So if folks are looking at the list on the screen here, kind of, you can look at these as being a few different kind of categories of items. So some of these are organizations that the city had a part in creating or is a founding member of. One example is Riata, which is the Rock Island Arsenal Defense Alliance. That is an organization that the mayor and a council member both sit on the board of, and it is basically a lobbying firm to support the continued existence of the Arsenal Island and all of the related economic impact that it has. So that's kind of an example of an entity that the city's a founding member of and is contributing their fair share to. Some of the others are organizations which have been specifically solicited for services because they are a sole source provider. One example of that is something like Visit Quad Cities. They are the tourism bureau for our region, and so they are the sole provider of that service at scale. Another example of a organization here is one that we have solicited a partnership with, say Quad City Arts. They run our public arts program, including our rotating sculpture program, mural program, the Help with Chalk Fest. So that's kind of one category. You'll also see that there are events, Red, White &amp; Boom being the kind of major one there. So that's a partnership, of course, between the city of Davenport and the city of Rock Island put on that event. Labor Day Parade is another event there, just Rock Island putting in on that. The way that these work varies a little bit depending on what the entity is. So in some cases, there is a contract for services, typically, you know, one to five years in term, where there's a clear outline of different services provided in exchange for funding. Others, it is a membership fee, so we are a member of Riata. There's not necessarily a contract in that case, but instead, an intergovernmental agreement. In other cases, it's a contribution, so Community Caring Conference, that's our contribution to the Block Club, creating organization that they are. So these organizations are ones that have not necessarily applied for funding. These are not grant programs that they're going after. Instead, they are organizations which the city, again, helped to create, is a member of, specifically solicited because they are a sole source provider, or it is an event the city itself puts on.
Okay, so to follow up, the Quad City Arts requested an additional 7,500, which would take it up for $30,000. What explanation was provided for this request?
The explanation for that increase is to maintain a level state of service provision, so it's not about providing any more services than they already do now, but continuing to provide the same level of services. Their operating costs have gradually increased, I think a lot of us can relate to that, and they have said that that increase to a full 30,000 is necessary for them to continue to do for us what they have been doing. Again, that portfolio of work is primarily the rotating sculpture program, occasional murals around the community, and helping to run events like Chalk Fest in Shewer Park.
And I do understand that they do great things for the community, but just looking at their financials for the past three years, they've been in like huge deficits, like over 200,000 for each year. So I guess my question is that a good way to, again, using taxpayer money, General Fund, to support an organization who's not really able to support themselves? I mean, at what point do we look at that, you know, and look at taxpayer funds being used and decide, is that a good way to use those funds to add additional monies?
We do that with a multiple of different agencies in different places, so.
And I think you'll find that's an anomaly. I do believe that there was a glitch in some of the accounting things that were happening with the timing of how financials were being put out in relation to Festival Trees as their largest fundraiser, but they are no longer in a deficit state.
I don't really understand, what is the point of, what is the point of a vendor's financial condition if they provide the services that we contract with them to provide? I mean, if they're doing the sculpture program, and if they're putting up the murals, and they're doing the stuff that we hire them to do, what does, whether they have a deficit budget, have anything to do with the services being provided?
Again, we're looking at the General Fund supporting these agencies. Again, taxpayer money, and we have a tight budget. We are in a deficit, so we're using, you know, trying to, you know, balance our budget. So at some point, we're going to have to make tough decisions and decide what can we fund and what can we not fund. So looking at priorities, not just priorities of what we want, but priorities of what we need. And then, I don't know if anyone else looked at the five-year projection for the General Fund, but for the next five years, I mean, we're looking at major deficits. So like I said, we're going to have to make hard decisions, and this is an area where we may have to look at to cut, you know, so we balance. So that's the point.
Sure, and, you know, us debating the merits of funding any organization is fine. That sounds like a different reason than what was originally said. You know, if there's any of these programs that you would like to propose that we cut, any of us are welcome to make those proposals, but it requires a majority of us up here to, you know, pass the budget.
I understand. I mean, we just had a discussion about cutting, you know, travel, you know, due to budget, so this is a budget discussion, and again, we did not have our budget workshop that we normally would have, so we could come together as a group in an open environment and have these discussions. open environment and have these discussions. So I've spent the last two weeks just trying to catch up with what was presented and then have that discussion. So really, this is, you know, it's a budget discussion to ask questions, make comments. So no, I'm not, I'm not making any recommendations. I'm just having a discussion. Okay, I think I have questions on the next slide on gaming also, which pretty much, again, ties to sponsorships and contributions because originally, these funds were used, you know, paid by gaming funds. So going to the gaming funds I had asked for, you know, to provide a brief background in history of the use of gaming funds, including the relevant gaming policy. What are the plans to restore gaming fund allocations to align with the established policy? And then specifically, we are using gaming to cover general fund and library debt. And I understand the library was added in 2024. So again, what's the explanation for that?
The gaming fund is, the amount of revenue it generates changed over time. I think at one time, it was close to $6 million, and, you know, now it's under $4 million. So what we funded with the gaming fund has changed over time. And as you indicated, there's a, you know, large amount of reoccurring debt that currently takes up the most of it. But there was some additional capacity and, you know, back a couple of years ago, we did decide to put the libraries portion of the Johnson Control Project in there to assist them. Anything to add, Jessica?
I think I would just go over the history of the gaming fund. I did a review from 2015 to 2025. And previous administrations have used the gaming fund for street projects, building improvements, computer, hardware, software, bond payments, contributions and sponsorships, or equipment purchases, and community economic development projects. So beginning in 2021 was when gaming fund revenue was primarily used to satisfy the debt payments, and that's where we're at right now. So the contributions moved over to the general fund. Moving on to the policy itself, it does state that revenues will be allocated for the following purposes based on priority decisions by city council, which are capital improvements, economic development projects, as directed by council for equipment purchases or service contracts in excess of $10,000. So staff believes that the proposed 2026 budget is in alignment with the policy as one could argue that these debt payments were for previous capital improvements, as well as equipment and economic development projects. As the city manager mentioned, we did move the libraries portion of the debt into the gaming fund revenue back in 2024. But since the bond was issued in 2020, gaming fund revenue has always been used to purchase or to cover the general fund's liability of that project.
I appreciate that, but when I look at the streets in my ward, as well as the decay that's been down there for years, I just want to make sure that some of that money's actually coming back to the first ward. And it seems like it's been going to the library and other places. And I need it back in the first ward.
sharing my recollection. Gaming used to fund all of the programs that was listed. And then our debt became more and more and more. So we started using gaming to pay off debt, which squeezed out funding for other things that Jessica listed, which is why the city council approved the street maintenance utility fee, right? I mean, it's this sort of funny, we had gaming revenue funding street improvements. We need to use the gaming money to fund debt payments because we have more debt, run out of street funding money, and then come full circle. Well, we still need to fund streets, so we created the street maintenance utility fee. It's my understanding that the street maintenance utility fee revenue is equally spread out among all seven wards in the city. So Alderman Evans, I'm hoping that you're seeing some street improvements in the first ward from that revenue. But that's my recollection of what happened.
There has been some movement down there. I do thank Public Works for what they've tried to do. The only problem is, when you look at the decay, as long as it's been, as I've watched the taxpayers in my wards steadily spend more and more money, they're overly frustrated, and I hear it on a regular. And so when you tell me that most of the main municipalities in the city of Rock Island is in the first ward, driving down some of these roads is doing a lot of damage to a lot of, not just our vehicles, but also the city's vehicles. I know for my own personal vehicle, I mean, I've had do front end work. I need to do front end work again now. Shouldn't have to, when we have our residents spending account of tax dollars that they are spending for the city of Rock Island.
I do have a question. So library fund debt, isn't the only thing the city's paying is for the HVAC system, for JCI?
Yes, the gaming fund is covering the libraries portion of the JCI debt.
I just want to make that clear, that you're covering the heating and cooling system for the library, and it's not that the library is getting an undue necessary amount of gift money given to them.
I think it's about $90,000, something like that.
Correct.
So just to wrap up my discussion on, you know, on the budget, I just wrote something up here that says, "The city of Rock Island is facing significant financial challenges that require immediate and strategic attention to address these concerns." I'm proposing, as I did, you know, before I was elected, a financial planning task force to be created. This task force will be responsible for thoroughly reviewing the city's financial information and providing recommendations to the city council and city manager. The primary goal will be to enhance financial planning and ensure a more stable financial future for Rock Island. And this was done almost 40 years ago, and from that, the city's financial policy was created, and we have had some major changes since then. So I think it's time to look at it again and create that task force so we can get some long-term financial planning in place for the next, you know, at least the next decade.
I've said it via email. I'll say it here publicly. I plan on voting no on this budget. I think it insufficiently resources key programs and strategies for the city of Rock Island, specifically housing needs in our community. Thanks.
Anyone else, council? Thank you. Agenda item six.
Public comment.
The first name is April Ladenberger.
Sorry, I've never done this before. Hello and good evening, everyone. My name is April Ladenberger, and thank you for the opportunity to talk about my best friend, Josh Ludicke. Josh was a long-term resident of Rock Island, most recently in Ward Number Three. A leader in our local chapter of the Democratic Socialists of America, Josh created mutual aid programs, led book clubs, and worked as an outreach organizer for the betterment of our community. He was passionate about self-edification and constantly looked for ways to help all of us do what we can for each other. On the evening of Friday, November 14th, Josh was just outside of his home crossing 17th Street on foot. He was hit by a car and thrown maybe 10 yards. Upon hearing the crash, his neighbor Natalie, who is with us today, ran out and held him while he was bleeding on the pavement. He was taken to Trinity in Rock Island nearby, then airlifted to the University of Iowa. His parents received the news and drove to Iowa City. By the time they arrived, or shortly thereafter, they were told early Saturday morning that Josh had a non-survivable brain injury, and he wasn't going to make it. There's nothing any of us can do to bring our friend back, but we can take steps to ensure that this never happens again. So shaky. Today, we're here to propose safety enhancements to the area around the crash. In this diagram, you can see that the high school is less than half a mile here to the south. So this is the area where the crash occurred. The hospital is just past here. Hy-Vee is nearby to the east, and there are two parks across 18th Avenue where we might see children or pets. There's also a convenience store on the corner of 18th Avenue and 17th Street. There's a bus stop along 17th Street. All this to note that this is a fairly heavy pedestrian area with a lot of reasons why students, families, and other residents would walk. Here, I want to let Natalie speak a little bit about the area around her house.
I, oh, there you go. I'm Natalie Linville-Mass. Right there? Miles? Okay, I'm good. All right. So yeah, I, this is by far the worst accident that's happened outside of our house. Yes, I was, there was Josh until the ambulances were able to come in and grab him. But this isn't the only accident. I wanted to come here and support these folks because this is, this is, my neighbor said, "Oh, the things that happen on 17th Street." Earlier this summer, my neighbor, two doors down, his pickup truck was rammed into. My next door neighbor, the Kellys, they had a Fiat that was out front. Another driver came and crashed into that vehicle and pushed it into my other neighbor that's two doors down. Before I moved to 17th Street, our porch was crashed into by a car. The house across the street from me, the yellow house, has also received damage, and there's been a crash of a car that went into the side of that house. My kids and my husband were coming out of Rock Island Stadium. That's had been two years ago, I think. And there was an accident with a motorcycle and another vehicle. My husband was able to lift the vehicle off of the gentleman with the help of some others so that he could live. This was, again, right outside of the stadium and in front of all of the kids. Guys, this is, we have accidents happening in front of this place at least a couple times a year. And this is, this should be under consideration. And, yeah, and I'm sorry for everything, but I just want you guys to know this. I do support this plan, and I know that my neighbors will too.
Excuse me, ladies. Is Amy Paton up there as well? Okay, okay. Please continue. We're on your time now, Amy.
Yeah.
Okay. No, no, no. Do what you guys do, but I'm just saying, the first five minutes is up.
Okay, got you. Thank you so much. Okay, so in the handouts, we put together a couple of diagrams to show where infrastructure could be improved. Closest to the area of the crash, which occurred right around here, proposing crosswalks as well as bump-out curbs to discourage or, I guess, encourage traffic slowing from the busier intersection to the north. This would also include ADA ramps. And we noticed, just in reviewing, that it would be helpful to have a sidewalk on the north side of 19th Avenue. We know that there are utility poles on the south side. We can look at the next diagram. Further south, so closer to the high school, there's another intersection with no crossings or ramps. So the same enhancements really ought to be considered across 17th Street and 20th, and 20th and a half. According to data we were able to find from IDOT, or Illinois Department of Transportation, this is from 2015, this road averaged 6,900 vehicles per day, but of course, that was 10 years ago. Given that pedestrians, at least in the state of Illinois, account for the largest number of fatalities in motor vehicle crashes, we just have to take action to protect our residents. Just closing comment is, you know, I miss my friend. We can't change what happened, but my hope is that we can pick up the torch where he left off and take the steps necessary to help and protect one another. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. And was Jessica also included? Okay, thank you, thank you. Dwight Ford?
Good evening, Mayor, and to the council. I stand to give comment as you are preparing to take a vote on a number of the amendments for the ordinance. My standing is not to try to convince you to do anything other than you've already committed to do. I'm actually standing because this is a long journey for us. That started somewhere toward the fourth week of January of 2025. We're still at it. We're long-distance runners. We're not going anywhere. The truth is, is that we are at a time where we're having more and more challenge. All of you know that. Antonio Grimskey said, "As the old world is dying, the new world struggles to be born." Now is the time of monsters. He wasn't calling people monsters. He was saying, "These are morbid conditions." And all of us have some of those realities right now. And what do we do when you have morbid conditions of inequality, poverty that continues to skyrocket, our challenges with not enough adequate housing? For us, we stand with two feet lodged in the realities of both now and next. The numbers have increased. That's the now. The unhoused individuals that are already huddled up under blankets, in doorways, in between buildings, you can see them. We didn't have these numbers last year. The numbers have already increased. Truth is, is the agency that I leave and the church that I pastor are a block and a half away. I left here at 8:30 one evening and counted 10 in a straight line. That's just on one street, on one side of the city. The numbers have already skyrocketed. The increase in vulnerable individuals and families due to the government restructuring and the benefits and the realities of a safety net that continues to diminish. Unless I have to tell you something you already know, the winter is already here. It's not coming. We stand with morbid conditions, so we got to have one foot in the now, but we also have one foot in the next. I rose to ask you, not the service providers, because we're already committed to our mission, what's next for the city of Rock Island? No disrespect to any of you. But in the words of the old euphemism of the past, the dog has finally caught the car. Now what? This is the ordinance that you want, and now what? What would you do? What would you do with the reality of what's coming? What is your role in reducing the highest level of concentrated poverty in the region? What is your responsibility to the rising number of homeless in your city? I'm not talking about the ones you get from other cities. I'm talking about in your city. What do you do as you are trying to control and to mitigate some of the challenges which you call with the service providers, who already have programs, who already have budgets and partnerships and plans? What are you going to do? What's your role in this? This ordinance cannot be the end of all of your current challenges. Once it's passed, what's going to happen next? Every city I have been pleasured to work with and research across this state and across this country, every last one of them, and including the city that you brought here, sister city in Peoria, each one of those realities, the city government plays sister city in Peoria, each one of those realities, the city government plays a major role. I'm not talking about simply creating ordinances. They play a major role. When I say play a role, they're not trying to be the coach. They're not trying to control the game. They're not trying to control the players. They're actually doing more than controlling. They're trying to collaborate, not trying to rig the game so it comes out with winners or losers. I'm asking you, what is your role as we turn the corner now? When the calls start coming in to EMS for emergency wards, visits, for significant weather damage like frostbite and weather-worn bodies? What's going to be your role? When abandoned houses are broken into and set afire for people trying to keep warm? What's your role? Because we had none of that last year. What's going to be your role when the petty crimes increase and you have to try to figure out why more and more crimes are occurring because people are trying to get off the street and get into the county courthouse so they can spend three or four days in lockdown? The truth is, is that we are in a bad situation. We've rejected an idea of a commission. We threw away the opportunity of a Good Neighbors Initiative. We have ruined, in this process, vital relationships with providers that you have by your own declaration, a limited budget. What's going to be your role? The nonprofit's going to take care of their responsibilities. What is yours? Thank you.
Mr. Ron Lund?
Good evening, Mayor and council members. I am here tonight to ask for something simple, yet profoundly important. The removal of the distance requirements in the social service ordinance. As amended, or as possibly will be amended tonight, this ordinance imposes a 500-foot restriction on providers near schools and parks. At the same time, it claims to uphold the Illinois Bill of Rights for the homeless. These two ideas cannot coexist. If distance is not going to be a deciding factor in licensing, then why is it written into law? Let's pause and think about what a 500-foot restriction traditionally means. It applies to individuals convicted of the most serious crimes. Child abduction, predatory sexual assault, exploitation, child pornography. These are horrific acts that deserve strict limitations. Now contrast that with what's happening here in Rock Island. The same restriction is being applied to people experiencing homelessness without a crime, without a trial, without a single finding of guilt. Five elected officials, chosen by fewer than 2,000 voters, have decided that homelessness is equivalent to the most egregious criminal behavior. That is not justice. That is discrimination. Every day this ordinance remains in place, it sends a clear message that poverty is a crime, that vulnerability is a threat, and that those who have the least deserve the harshest barriers. These are human beings, neighbors, veterans, parents, struggling to survive. And instead of offering compassion and solutions, we're building walls that push them further into despair. Rock Island can do better. We must do better. Removing this restriction is not just a legal correction. It is a moral imperative. Let us choose dignity over stigma, humanity over fear, and policies that reflect the values we claim to uphold. Thank you.
Heather Anderson?
Hello, I'm Heather Anderson. I am here representing Birth to Five Illinois, Region 49, which is Rock Island County. We are an organization that is trying to partner with the community so Illinois is the best place to raise a family. We're comprised of a, we're comprised of a family council and an action council. Our family council, those are families that have children age eight and under, and we listen to those councils and see how we can help support them in moving some of their goals forward and addressing some of their needs. So we are the bridge builders between those families and agencies, legislators, and businesses. Some of the things that we're working on is a crisis nursery, for instance. And so we are out in community, having discussions with different organizations. And so we aren't doing the work. We're the backbone agency, but we're partnering with other folks in the community that can move this, these things forward. And so we have, for instance, seven crisis nurseries in the state of Illinois. Our closest one is in Peoria. And so we would like to have one here locally. And so again, we're not doing that work, but we're going to support the folks that are going to be moving that forward, hopefully. Other things that we're working on, we have done the Champions of Early Childhood Education Awards. We have those once a year. We've done them twice now. And so we're trying to uplift the early childhood field and folks that, you know, maybe are considering that as a career. And so we want to honor the folks that are doing that hard work. And so we ask the community to elect and vote for people that are teachers in early childhood, and then we just, we give them awards and say thank you for the work that you're, that you're doing. Another initiative that we have is on our social media posts, we want to highlight men in early childhood. We want other young men that are coming up to see that as a viable field, and so we highlight them on social media. And so that is some of the things that we're working on. So I, we're just here to build awareness and let you know that we're working throughout the whole state of Illinois. We're specifically in Rock Island County. I have some flyers and some business cards. If I can bring those forward? Yes?
Thank you, ma'am. I can't pronounce the last name, but Natalie. I was wondering, was she, okay, have you spoken your piece? Okay. Thank you. Thank you. Kate Farrell?
So that's good timing, because I'm also here to speak about Birth to Five. And I just love, obviously, there's a lot of very serious, heavy topics that we need to discuss, but it's so exciting to be able to be here and discuss the good that's also happening in our community. So I am Kate Farrell. I am a parent coordinator with the Parent Mentor Program, which is a program that allows parents to mentor in our local schools. And this year, we were excited that we added our first Rock Island school. So that has been really exciting. I just recently joined Birth to Five family council that Heather spoke of. I first heard of Birth to Five when they gave a presentation during one of our Parent Mentor weekly workshops, but I was especially drawn to this program after seeing them at several community events this past summer. I can see that they are a program that is invested in our cities. I love their energy, compassion, and desire to be productive and visible in our region. I love their mission of spotlighting the positive things happening in early childhood education, and also their input in ways we can continually improve, as Heather kind of spoke to. And then just lastly, my favorite thing that I've seen this council achieve so far is this resource magnet that they assembled for free, or it shows free or low-cost local mental health service providers in our area. I was able to share this resource in the school I work at and with friends, and they have appreciated this list as well. Thank you. And if you guys would like.
Ma'am, what school was added? What Rock Island school?
Longfellow.
Okay.
Yes, please look into the Parent Mentor Program as well. Yes. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Okay. Agenda item seven, update Rock Island. Update Rock Island. More than 9,000 Thanksgiving meals served. Over the course of three days, the Martin Luther King Jr. Community Center served more than 9,000 free Thanksgiving meals throughout the Quad Cities, making this the largest by far in the event's 36-year history. Yes. Meals were distributed curbside at the MLK Center on Friday, November 22nd, and Saturday, November, excuse me, Friday, November 21st, and Saturday, November 22nd. On Saturday, in partnership with Dorn Transfer, meals were delivered throughout the Quad Cities to low-income housing, senior housing, and to seniors and people with disabilities. On Sunday, the MLK Center welcomed people to enjoy a free, hot Thanksgiving meal in its banquet room. This event is made possible through the hard work of more than 300 volunteers, many of whom have been coming back for more than a decade. We thank them for their time and efforts. One round of applause for the volunteers, please. City offices closed for Thanksgiving. City Hall and city offices will be closed this Thursday, November 22nd, and Friday, November 28th, in observance of the Thanksgiving holiday. During this week, refuse, recycling, and yard waste will be on schedule with the exception that Thursday's collection will be on Friday. Thank you. Agenda item eight. We will now close the regular meeting and open up the public hearing. This is truth and taxation. Would anyone in the public wish to speak? Hearing none, we will open up the regular, we will open back up the regular business now. Agenda item nine.
Nine A, report from the Legal Department regarding amendments to Chapter Eight, Article 23, establishing a social services license, first reading.
Move to consider the ordinance.
There's been a first and a second. Is there any discussion? Roll call, please.
Alderperson Evans.
No.
Hurt.
Aye.
Barnes.
Aye.
Swanson.
Aye.
Parker.
Aye.
Hulus.
Aye.
And Healy.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Agenda item B.
Report from the Legal Department regarding an amendment to Chapter Eight, Article 23, Sections 8-569 and 8-571 regarding the removal of food pantries from the ordinance, first reading.
Motion to consider the ordinance. Second.
There's been a first and a second. Is there any discussion? Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderperson Evans.
Aye.
Hurt.
Aye.
Barnes.
Aye.
Swanson?
No.
Parker?
No.
Hulus?
No.
And Healy?
No.
Motion fails.
Agenda item C.
Report from the Legal Department regarding amendments to Chapter Eight, Article 23, replacing city manager with mayor, first reading.
Motion to consider the ordinance. Second.
There's been a first and a second. Is there any discussion?
Yes, I think I would like to just add, based on what was discussed last year, that it would be more political to have the mayor, to replace the mayor with the city manager. And I guess my thought is that it could be even more political having the city manager make these decisions, because he has to report directly to eight politicians. Not being funny, but that could be a little more difficult for him. So I'm in favor of replacing the city manager with the mayor.
Any more discussion? Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderperson Evans.
Aye.
Hurt?
No.
Barnes?
Aye.
Swanson?
No.
Parker?
No.
Hulus?
No.
And Healy?
No.
Motion fails.
Agenda item D.
Report from the Legal Department regarding amendments to Chapter Eight, Article 23, Section 8-575, distant requirements, first reading.
Motion to consider, consider the ordinance.
Is there a second? Leslie?
Yeah. If there's no second, then we move on to the next motion.
Okay. Agenda item E.
Report from the Legal Department regarding an amendment to Chapter Eight, Article 23, Section 8-577A, occupancy limits, first reading.
Move to consider the ordinance.
Second.
There's been a first and a second. Is there any discussion?
Could the city attorney touch on this one again briefly?
Sure. So previously, the language of that portion of the ordinance talks about there being a 49-person maximum occupancy requirement for all shelters, or what's based from the fire marshal, whichever is, is less. Here, we are getting rid of that 49-person maximum occupancy requirement and just allowing the fire marshal to determine the building's total occupancy. So that's right. It's just removing the 49-person maximum occupancy and still saying that occupancy will be governed by the fire marshal and then our building code as well.
So can you explain what a yes vote or a no vote means?
Sure. If you vote yes, you are basically voting to amend the ordinance to get rid of that 49-person maximum occupancy requirement, and instead just allowing the fire marshal to determine the building's total occupancy. Voting no, the 49-person maximum occupancy requirement would stand.
So I would motion to consider the ordinance.
We've already got a, we've already got a motion.
Yeah.
Oh. Is there a second? Sorry.
We're in discussion. Any more discussion? Does everyone know where we are? Roll call, please.
Alderperson Evans.
Yes.
Hurt?
Aye.
Barnes?
Aye.
Swanson?
No.
Parker?
Aye.
Hulus?
No.
Healy?
No.
Motion carries.
Agenda item F.
Report from the Legal Department regarding amendments to Chapter Eight, Article 23, Section 8-577C, removal of 12-hour time limit, first reading.
Motion to consider the ordinance.
Second.
There's been a first and a second. Is there any discussion? Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderperson Evans.
Yes.
Hurt?
Aye.
Barnes?
Aye.
Swanson?
No.
Parker?
No.
Hulus?
No.
And Healy?
No.
Motion fails.
Agenda item G.
Report from the Legal Department regarding amendments to Chapter Eight, Article 23, Section 8-577, by adding a new provision, O, social work and therapy services, first reading.
Move to consider the ordinance.
There's been a first and a second. Is there any discussion?
My discussion, this particular one is that previously, there were discussions with social service providers about amendments. This is not a part of the amendments that was added later. So my question is, is that really good faith, based on the discussion that we had with social services?
So this was added because there was three council members that requested for it to be added, but yes, I would acknowledge this was not amendment that was discussed with social service providers.
And I guess my next question, isn't this something that's already covered under state statutes and state laws? And if so, why do we want to add to that burden?
This ordinance regulates the city's regulation of social service providers. Yes, anybody who is performing social service or therapy as defined by the state statutes that regulate providing social work or therapy has to be a licensed social worker or therapist, or maybe has to be going through some sort of like apprenticeship program as defined by the state statute, right? But regardless, the point is, is that yes, people doing this work have to be licensed by the state. However, this is saying that if you want to However, this is saying that if you want to have a social service license as an entity with the city of Rock Island, which is the new license that we've created for the municipality, you have to make sure that people performing social work and psychotherapy services, if it's being performed within your facility, are licensed professionals. So the state statute puts the requirement on the individual. If you're going to be providing the services, you have to be licensed. The city ordinance puts the responsibility on the provider. If you're going to allow these services to be performed within your facility, you need to make sure that the people providing these services are appropriately licensed.
So do we have those same requirements for other licensed professionals? I think somebody mentioned like daycare facilities.
So we, within this ordinance, we do have a provision regarding medical services, and they have to be a licensed medical provider to provide services or to contract with licensed medical provider. So it's similar to that as it relates to the social service ordinance. You are correct, Alderwoman Barnes, that this is already state law, that they are already regulated under these two, these two state statutes. But this, including this language in the ordinance, would give the city a mechanism to revoke or suspend a license if they are providing these social services without being, without following state law. So right now, you know, under the current ordinance, we wouldn't have a mechanism to revoke someone's license, but this would, would enable the city to do that, to make sure that they're following state law.
So if they weren't following state law, wouldn't the state revoke their license?
This is a municipally granted license. The, the social service license that we're discussing and that we passed the ordinance about is not regulated by the state. The state regulates the individuals performing the profession.
Yeah.
But not the license that we're discussing for the organization.
Yeah, sorry, that was probably bad language that I was using, that we're talking about two different kinds of licenses here. Obviously, the individuals that are providing social services, they do have to be licensed to the state. What we are also discussing is the city's social service license, which basically regulates those service providers. So yeah, I kept talking about licensing and so it's a little bit confusing because we're talking about two separate licenses here.
This was brought to my attention by a licensed psychotherapist. They reached out to me and asked to make sure that people providing these services within these facilities are licensed professionals, and I think that that's a reasonable request.
Any more discussion? Roll call, please.
Alderperson Evans.
No.
Hurt.
Aye.
Barnes.
No.
Swanson.
Aye.
Parker.
Aye.
Hulus.
Aye.
And Healy.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Agenda item H.
Report from the Traffic Engineering Committee regarding a request from Leo Botista, twenty-eight oh four Fortieth Avenue, to install a three-way stop at the intersection of Twenty-Eighth Street and Fortieth Avenue, first reading.
Motion to consider, suspend the rules, and pass the ordinance.
There's been a first and a second.
Is there any discussion? Roll call, please.
Alderperson Evans.
Yes.
Hurt.
Aye.
Barnes.
Aye.
Swanson.
Aye.
Parker.
Aye.
Hulus.
Aye.
And Healy.
Aye.
Agenda item ten.
A, report from the clerk's office regarding a request from Saint Patrick Society to hold their annual Saint Patrick's Day parade and a resolution for the closure of the Master Sergeant Stanley Talbot Memorial Bridge and Fifteenth Street US Highway sixty-seven on Saturday, March fourteenth, twenty twenty-six, from eleven thirty a.m. until one thirty p.m.
Motion to approve the event and ask for recommendations and adopt all resolutions.
Second.
I have a first and a second. Is there any discussion? Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderperson Evans.
Aye.
Hurt.
Aye.
Barnes.
Aye.
Swanson.
Aye.
Parker.
Aye.
Hulus.
Aye.
And Healy.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Agenda item H.
Report from the Traffic Engineering Committee regarding a request from Leo Botista, twenty-eight oh four Fortieth Avenue, to install a three-way stop at the intersection of Twenty-Eighth Street and Fortieth Avenue, first reading.
Motion to consider, suspend the rules, and pass the ordinance.
There's been a first and a second.
Is there any discussion? Roll call, please.
Alderperson Evans.
Yes.
Hurt.
Aye.
Barnes.
Aye.
Swanson.
Aye.
Parker.
Aye.
Hulus.
Aye.
And Healy.
Aye.
Agenda item eleven.
Consent agenda items A through F.
Motion to approve consent agenda items A through F.
Second.
I have a first and a second. Is there any discussion? Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderperson Evans.
Yes.
Hurt.
Aye.
Barnes.
Aye.
Swanson.
Aye.
Parker.
Aye.
Hulus.
Aye.
And Healy.
Aye.
Agenda item B.
Report from the Community Development Department regarding a resolution establishing a time and place for a public hearing, hearing for the North Rock Island Court District Tiff Redevelopment Project area.
Motion to adopt a resolution. Second.
There's been a first and a second. Is there any discussion?
Due to the nature of my employment, I need to recuse myself from this vote.
Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderperson Evans.
Yes.
Hurt.
Aye.
Barnes.
Aye.
Swanson.
Aye.
Hulus.
Aye.
Healy.
Aye.
Agenda item thirteen.
A, report from the Public Works Department regarding an addendum for additional IMAG Engineering Services for the Valley West Development Project in the amount of thirty thousand dollars.
Motion to approve the amendment and authorize the city manager to execute the document.
I have a first and a second.
Is there any discussion? Roll call, please.
Alderperson Evans.
Yes.
Hurt.
Aye.
Barnes.
Aye.
Swanson.
Aye.
Parker.
Aye.
Hulus.
Aye.
Healy.
Aye.
Agenda item B.
Report from the Human Resources Department regarding a self-insurance package with IPMG in the amount of one million forty-eight thousand, six hundred forty-two dollars.
Motion to approve the self-insurance package as recommended and authorize the city manager to execute the contract.
I have a first and a second. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Alderperson Evans.
Yes.
Hurt.
Aye.
Barnes.
Aye.
Swanson.
Aye.
Parker.
Aye.
Hulus.
Aye.
And Healy.
Aye.
Agenda item C.
Report from the Community Development Department regarding an amendment to the, to the sale agreement with the Center of Credit Union for Lot Two of the Solomon Site.
Motion to approve the amendment and authorize the city manager to execute the document agreements.
Second.
First and a second I have. Is there any discussion? Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderperson Evans.
Yes.
Hurt.
Aye.
Barnes.
Aye.
Swanson.
Aye.
Parker.
Aye.
Hulus.
Aye.
And Healy.
Aye.
Agenda item fourteen.
Budget adjustments A through C, I can read each item separately if anyone would like.
Motion to approve the adjustments A through C.
Actually, could we pull C as a separate item? Okay.
Motion to approve items A and B. Second.
I have a first and a second. Is there any discussion? Roll call, please.
Alderperson Evans.
Yes.
Hurt.
Aye.
Barnes.
Aye.
Swanson.
Aye.
Parker.
Aye.
Hulus.
Aye.
And Healy.
Aye.
Agenda item C.
Report from the Finance Department regarding inter-fund transfer from the Water Operations Fund Five Hundred to the Sunset Marina Fund Five Twenty in the amount of one million five hundred and forty thousand.
Motion to approve budget, item C.
I have a first and a second.
Is there any discussion?
Yes, I did have some questions for staff that I sent to the, sent to them already, responded, so this is more for the public's benefit. So my questions were regarding the transfers to the marina. So what is the current cash deficit of the Sunset Marina Fund? What are the plans to eliminate the current deficit and repay the general fund loan? Are there any concerns about receiving the FEMA funds from the federal government? You know, thinking along the lines of the RACE grant. Also, why does the water fund have one point nine million cash balance? Is it for an upcoming project? How will using one point four million of the water fund impact the upcoming water rate increases? And then finally, what is the estimated completion date for the dock replacement?
Mike, do you want to address the estimated completion date and the timing of the funds coming from FEMA?
Yeah, so the construction project is slated to be completed by the end of December. The FEMA reimbursement, once we have submitted all the documents and they've officially reviewed, should take approximately sixty to ninety days for that reimbursement. As far as the revenues and expenses for the marina, we increased rates for the twenty-twenty, for this year's season. Those were approved by council in twenty twenty-four in anticipation for this capital project. So unfortunately, the work wasn't completed earlier, it was, it was completed later than we anticipated, so we did not receive any of the slip revenue for the new four-hundred docks. So we missed out on seventy-eight slip rentals this year. But again, those, that work will be completed at the end of this, at the end of next month, and then we, or have a lot of excited voters that are very excited to hopefully lease out those new slips. And with all the dredging that's been completed, electrical upgrades to the other docks, we think that the, the slip ratio for lease rentals next year will be high enough to bring in the revenue that's needed for the capital projects.
To follow up with the rest of the remaining questions, there is a negative cash balance of one point seven million dollars in the marina at this time. So the plan to eliminate that negative fund balances is similar to what we've done with the other fund balances where we, now that the project is almost completed, it's nearing completion at the end of this year, we'll start to budget a surplus of revenue versus expenditures to help build that cash balance down. We won't be making the final payments for this fund, for the FEMA project, until January of next year, so there will be no impact to twenty twenty-five. It'll be done in twenty twenty-six.
And water rates are set by a rate model, looks into the future, operational and capital costs, and ideally, you'll, you'll reserve some funds for future projects, and that's why you have a balance, basically saving for future capital projects to pay for them and avoid having to borrow too much money.
Okay. Thank you, and I guess I'll vote no on this. I understand that the project has been approved, and this is more of a formality, but just in general, I don't feel like, you know, it really aligns with the financial policy as it relates to enterprise funds, you know, that are in deficit, so that's why I'll vote no tonight.
Any more discussion? Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderperson Evans.
Yes.
Hurt.
Aye.
Barnes.
No.
Swanson.
Aye.
Parker.
Aye.
Hulus.
Aye.
And Healy.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Agenda item fifteen.
Report from the clerk's office regarding the schedule of regular meeting dates for the Rock Island City Council Calendar, year twenty twenty-six.
Move to approve the city council annual meetings calendar as recommended.
Second.
There's been a first and a second. Is there any discussion?
Guess I have a lot of questions and discussions tonight. Can we at some point add a special meeting for a budget workshop at some point?
It's up to the council. Typically, you know, we'll talk about the schedule early in the year, and that would be a good time to address whether or not what we propose meets the council's expectations. I would agree with her. As we're still spending out all of this money, I think it's better for the council to take the time to get a full understanding of what we're actually voting on, instead of now that we're looking at the fact that we've moved the study session away, that we're actually starting the meetings, I think we should actually have a budget session.
So is this something that should be tabled or can be amended later?
I mean, I think right now, all we're voting on are the annual meetings, which are the second and fourth Mondays of every month.
But not in detail?
No. So what Alderman, yeah, Alderman, uh, woman Barnes is proposing would be a special meeting, basically. And so these are, this is just your regular two meetings per month.
Okay.
This is when they're held. So, so yeah, you don't need to table this to add that later on. That's just something we can add later on. We just have to follow OMA and notice it up the way that we do when some people have ward meetings and that sort of thing.
Okay, understood.
Thank you.
Okay. Uh, any more discussion? Roll call, please.
Alderperson Evans.
Yes.
Hurt.
Aye.
Barnes.
Aye.
Swanson.
Aye.
Parker.
Aye.
Hulus.
Aye.
And Healy.
Aye.
Agenda item B.
Report from the Public Works Department regarding the surplus of city vehicles and equipment.
Move to approve the declaration of surplus vehicles and equipment and grant permission to dispose of the items in a manner that will be most advantageous to the city of Rock Island.
Second.
There's been a first and a second. Is there any discussion? Roll call, please.
Alderperson Evans.
Yes.
Hurt.
Aye.
Barnes.
Aye.
Swanson.
Aye.
Parker.
Aye.
Hulus.
Aye.
And Healy.
Aye.
Agenda item sixteen. Other business, new business. Does anybody have any new business to discuss?
I just want to say that the couple of days at the Martin Luther King Center was very nice, very well put together. I do thank them for all that they've done, as well as all of the volunteers.
I got an idea to pitch, Yang. Leslie, I emailed you about this, so feel free to jump in wherever you'd like. It's always sort of struck me that we remove agenda items in a sort of ad hoc way. If, if there's a agenda item on the agenda that's published and presented, but, you know, further discussion is needed or whatever, you know, usually the mayor at the beginning of the meeting will just be like, we're going to remove Agenda Four B. But that seems kind of, like I said, ad hoc. Why, what's going on, et cetera. I don't know what OMA says about this, but what are everyone's ideas about including I don't know what OMA says about this, but what are everyone's ideas about including a regular motion at the beginning of the meeting to approve or adopt the agenda? At that point, if there are objections to including particular motion or agenda items on the agenda, that's where it would be appropriate to make like an amendment, or I'm not entirely sure what the proper nomenclature is, but, you know, it just would seem to me like it would be a more formal and established way if we're going to make last-minute changes to the, to the city council meeting agenda if we had a motion to approve the agenda at the beginning of every single city council meeting.[1628.95]